Good evening, everyone. Welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. And I would like to call the meeting to order at 6:03. If we could stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll turn it over for a roll call, please.
Mrs. Giller.
Uh, excuse.
Mr. Pascal.
Here.
Mr. Jackson.
Here.
Mrs. Dionne.
Here.
Mrs. Carey.
Here.
Mr. Bianelli.
He's on his way here.
Mr. Nolan.
Here.
Again, thank you, everyone. Last week, we were without internet and we didn't want to broadcast a meeting that couldn't be heard or seen, so we postponed the meeting and thank you again for all of your understanding with that. And I'd like to turn it over to Thank You, Ash.
Thank you. Welcome to our meeting. Before we start, I just want to point out some of our teachers and students in the pictures. So the first picture is Mrs. Nelson, a fifth-grade teacher at Harmony Hill, reading to her students on the lawn. This middle picture is Ms. Simmons, an ELA teacher at the middle school. And the final picture down in the right-hand corner, you can see Mr. Santar Cantala, high school's social studies teacher, and he's welcoming parents and guardians during the virtual open class. So as always, if you have questions, submissions for public comment can be emailed to boecomment@cohoz.org. So before I turn the presentation over to Stacy Smackey, I just want to thank her for all of her efforts and all the time she has spent. Also, thank you to the Budget Committee and Union Leadership for your meetings. This has been a very difficult process with difficult conversations and questions with no easy answers. I'm sure we'll continue our discussion after the presentation. Please, thank you.
So this is a collection of headlines from various newspapers and magazines. So what do we know? We know that coronavirus has had a devastating impact on our economy and that New York State is experiencing significant revenue shortfalls as a result of this pandemic. We also know that Governor Cuomo has called the federal government for relief and this is an election year. Further, we know that local government budgets have been impacted as a result of this crisis. Next slide, please. So we've been discussing. Schools are advised that we could see as much as 20% in reductions absent of any federal relief throughout this school year. From a revenue standpoint, the impact for us here in Coho's is over $4.8 million. So that is an annual impact. We've been taking a quarterly approach and we are talking tonight about the 10% reduction plan, which is cumulative for quarter one and quarter two. So the 10% plan is a total of $2.4. That's the goal of total reductions. And obviously, the reductions impact us across all levels of staffing, services, programs, extracurriculars, and ultimately, our financial balance. We did receive 100% of the scheduled A payment for September. So as a result, we have pushed the quarter three, the 15% plan, the implementation date from December 1st to January 4th as a result of that. Regarding progress, the Budget Committee has met throughout September, the 21st and the 28th, and then again October 5th. The Budget Committee is made up of three of our board members, central office staff, our principals, and our directors, facilities, and technology. The committee has been tasked with providing recommendations for a 10% and 15% reduction plan. And to date, we've identified a combined total of $2 million in reductions. Our next meeting is scheduled for October 9th, next week. Union leadership meeting updates. So we met on September 22nd and October 1st. These meetings are made up of our board president, central office staff, and our union leadership, which includes our principals association, our teachers association, and our support staff CSCI's membership. We reviewed the Budget Committee recommendations and we also take any recommendations from the leadership. We have had a recommendation by our CTA leadership suggesting reconsidering opening up the retirement incentive language and we do have a draft for consideration. We'll continue to have discussions with the union leadership and we will update them on the plan as it progresses throughout the process. I just also want to say that we're working on a 10% and 15% reduction scenario because we're hopeful that we will not receive the full 20% impact here in Coho's as our schools are high need, city district, and we've been identified as being business stress. So the scenario timelines. The 10% stated reduction plan, again, the ultimate goal is a cumulative $2.4 million. The goal is to continue the in-person hybrid instruction models that we've implemented since reopening schools in September. The Budget Committee has recommended reductions. I'll go over them later in the presentation. The Board of Education will report out to you throughout the month of October. And anticipated implementation would be Monday, November 16th, and that's in line with the end of the quarter at the secondary level. The 15% stated reduction plan is a cumulative $3.6 million. We would need to examine alternative instruction models at the secondary level, so we'd have to reconsider our reopening plans and potentially revise them. The Budget Committee, again, is tasked for to come up with recommendations. The Board of Education will receive reports throughout the month of November and the anticipated implementation date is January 4th. So the proposed 10% reduction plan. We discussed a number of these high level, but we didn't agree to detail tonight. TRS, we were fortunate to come in under budget, so that was actual savings. District-wide spending freeze was implemented as soon as we were notified of the potential for reductions, actually, before school started. We revised our Bosie's contract, this was where we're going to manage arts and education. We renegotiated the prepay contract. We terminated several contracts, including A R C transitions and the leading and supporting contracts. And they also have had staffing concessions for our individual contract holders for vacation by Mac and Miles. Program reductions include the AIM Academy, which impacts our high schools, a total of 2.3 FTEs for our AIM Academy. Clubs, there would be no offerings. The only exception would be National Honor Society in the high school and National Junior Honor Society at our middle school. We're exploring reduced and no-cost options for athletics. Sports are categorized in three levels. We have low, medium, and high-risk sports, the fall sports, as you're aware, have been moved to March. Winter could be as early as the end of November, maybe as late as January, and spring would be in April. So we're having discussions with booster clubs as well as our CTA union and we're examining transportation options as well. Next slide. Staffing reductions. We have a 1.0 special education teacher. The physician is at the high school. The reduction is at Dan Sky preschool. 1.0 reading. This goes through attrition. 1.0 guidance. The impact would be a reduction of 0.6 at the middle school and 0.4 in our high school. This would leave at our high school 2.6 FTE and in our middle school 1.4. District-wide, 0.8 music teacher. That would require several of our staff members to adjust their existing schedules. 0.5 library media specialist, which would have remaining 0.5 at our high school and 0.5 at our middle school. Two teaching assistants, one at the high school and one at the middle school. One 10-month secretary. This is through retirement. One 12-month secretary. This is through attrition. So each of those reductions would require either a transfer, a building transfer and/or an assignment modification to existing staff. 0.4 registrar. 1.0 custodian. This is through retirement. In the existing environment, it's difficult not to fill, but we would try not to fill until the new school year, so. Part-time security. No coverage, though. It'll be offered at the elementary level. At least not on a regular basis. If there was a need, we would organize it for the middle school and the high school existing staff. And then we did have a retirement of the central office staff. So again, to recap, the proposed reductions plan at this time is $2 million or about $400,000 short of the ultimate goal. More than half of the reductions are for staffing and extracurricular. The budget freeze is about 17% of the reductions. Renegotiated contracts make up about 13.5% of the reductions. The savings from TRS make up just about 9%. And Bosie's services, 6.5%. So next steps, we'll continue to meet with our union leadership and our Budget Committee to finalize the plan and report out at our next board meeting, which is October 21st. Again, more in action for the 10% reduction plan is anticipated for the 11/4 meeting. And then the 15% proposal plan remains a work in progress and will be presented throughout November. And we move that implementation again to the beginning of January. Anyone have any questions at this time?
I know from being on the Budget Committee there, we're scrounging and, you know, we're still short here $400,000 and it's not as though, at the moment, we have lots of options to choose from, right? Like, this is everything on the table. We have no other choices that have really been discussed aside from the option, which we're trying to put off of virtualizing the secondary level. Is that correct? Like, we're not... There have been no other financial savings that have been brought to the table to, you know, to the Budget Committee or to the Board that, you know, we would be weighing options. This is...
None of this, I guess.
Right.
So the staff, the staff that will be impacted have been... Dialogue with the staff, they're in a situation. Does the full payment, the full September payment change the effective date for the staff reductions?
Not for the 10% plan, but for the 15% plan, yes. It moved it from December 1st to January.
So they can reference that in the presentation. So that impacts, that impacts the staff. So it's just more time that we...
Correct.
I'm aware of some flexibility, if you will, regarding certifications that might help us in some situations. I'm assuming that we're likely to have whereby a teacher could get certified at another level. Definitely, it was done in the past, but more quickly than it was done in the past. Is that something we're aware of and we're examining?
Yes, it's something we're aware of. Due to COVID, there's some emergency certifications and we are examining that. We also have to look at other positions as well or our callback list, et cetera, due to previous cuts. But, you know, we're examining all options.
One last thing. I'm assuming you can tell us, but I want to say this just because it was said publicly. There's still no definitive work from the Department of Education. And you see, full payment for September, we didn't know that was coming. It could have been full. It could have been whatever they determined.
Correct.
And in October, we're in the same wait-and-see situation. And so there's been no formal communication from the state.
None whatsoever.
The only, the only formal indication we did get was that there would be a 20% reduction for the year, right? Or that was...
It could be.
Could be. Thank you.
Stacy, do you want to talk about some of the payments we're still going to be wanting for?
Yeah, so over the summer, we had withholds in several aid categories. Two expense-driven aid categories, Bosie's and excess cost aid. And two grant file payments were impacted, the UPK as well as the SMART part schools. Today, we received a food service state payment. It was at 80%. Is that expense-driven? Yes, it is. It's obviously in some actual meals. Yes. We also haven't received any approval of our grants. Normally, when the grants are approved, we receive 20% of the total budget. So starting point, so we're floating.
Future pathways?
All the grants basically.
All of our grants.
And that as well.
So we did receive notice of our approval of our UPK grant just recently.
Yeah.
However, not payment.
Not as far as the other payment.
Yeah.
So for the other, future pathways in particular, I just happen to know more about them than the others. Those schools are registering for the spring term. At this point, we're not, we're not sure about our findings and the tuition.
We did try to plan accordingly with the grants this year, understanding that there could be a potential 20%. So for example, later on tonight, you'll see as a requirement of the grant on the agenda, the after-school, like the school virtual programming. So we reduced, we reduced that programming for now by 20% to take a little bit of that. So we'll look at and see if that makes any difference.
We reduced the prepay by 20% also. Or we could make no reductions if the...
So at what point will it become too late to modify grant budgets and then force us to pay out of the general fund? At what point will it be too late? So if we had to amend the grant budgets, right? We've already incurred the costs using the budget that we developed for the grant and we realize that we're going to not be fully funded. Then how do we come out of general?
It would have to come out, but typically, we're allowed to amend basically throughout the year. So from a reporting perspective, we have longer, but from a cash perspective, I would say we need to know January 2nd.
Yeah. So that December payment is really going to be telling as a general fund, but also if you're going to think that with the grants, right?
Now, is the grant funding included? Is part of that 4.0?
No.
So reasonably, we'd have significantly more at stake.
Okay.
And everything that was held from the summer is also that part of this 4.0?
Correct. We're hopeful that we're going to receive those payments in full. We're hopeful we did receive the goals for that.
So we did receive a portion of the access cost. That was all a portion of it.
So for some, for some of these grants, we've incurred, we've incurred expenses already.
Absolutely.
Staffing expenses.
Absolutely.
We paid.
Yep.
But we have, left to receive.
Yeah, a lot of our grants. I mean, the majority of the grants are people.
Staffing.
Yeah.
Title I, special education.
Correct.
We don't know the status of the...
Other questions from the board right now?
Thank you for everything that you've done to us. We are, none of this is easy. It's awful, I can imagine, the discussions that we have had to have over the last few weeks. It's appreciated, you know, in this. And again, anybody who has any other ideas or suggestions, please let Rick always volunteer to be the person on this. We'll bring them to the Budget Committee.
And I know it's, it's clear, but, you know, none of this is a reflection on like any employee or staff's capabilities or, you know, contributions to the district. These are incredibly difficult choices that due to the financial situation we're in, we, the district has to make in order to stay operational and fulfilling our mission to some degree.
That's good. So is there a process? And I believe this is occurring, has occurred, but just bringing this to the board level, we're examining every, every cut, every staffing cut to explore what could be done to support, to support people that were impacted within, within our staffing. And just looking at their circumstances, what can, what can we do to be supportive. So I, I don't want to say assume, but so that is happening and we're engaged, person by person?
Yes, we had, we had discussions late, last week with each person and, you know, they have been advised, first of all, to reach out to Tara Jarcelle, our personnel assistant, for assistance if, you know, when this comes to fruition for, and to get the information in advance so they're prepared for navigating unemployment, for navigating health insurance if needed, total reductions impact health insurance, but not partial, partial reductions. Principals have been talking. We will continue to assist, answer questions. Tara will send information, including other, other assistance, recommendations for other types of assistance if needed. So yes, we will continue to work and try to answer questions. I know this is in no way ideal, but we have offered teachers the potential of the building substitutes. I know that's, that's not a wonderful alternative, but we will work around their schedules and the teachers who are reduced. So we are, we are looking at aspects and, and we will continue to, and we'll continue to have discussions.
So if that, that's our current formula, I would say.
Oh, no, that's right. So I guess I have a question. I'm kind of putting myself in this position. I'm down to a 0.4. I don't know when my two classes are, but I don't know how I could get another job. Is it, is it possible that somebody could ask for a total reduction? Be laid off. But unemployed is still be on the callback list. Then we could somehow reduce rate at that point, bring in a 0.4. And we, you know, we pay less for that because maybe somebody in-house would already be receiving the benefits. And that person that's now at 0.4, they can't live on that, could hopefully find another job and be on the callback list. Now we're going with this. I'm trying to, I'm trying to help these 0.4 people because 0.4 unemployment, they can't survive. They can't, and they need another job. So if I have an eight o'clock class and a one o'clock class, I'm, I'm kind of hoping somehow that schedule might be worked out where those 0.4 people would be the first two classes that I know the logistics of that might be difficult to do. It's, it's a big puzzle. I understand the scheduling, but I'm just throwing ideas out where this 0.4 teacher collects full unemployment, getting, you know, and look for a job where they wouldn't have to start at 11 o'clock in the morning or noon and still be on the callback list. Because once you resign, that's it. You remove yourself from the callback list and you remove yourself from the staff.
So could you explain that? If you want to just reference.
Is that possible, is really my question? Is it possible to take, to take the full layoff versus the 0.6?
So the reductions that have been presented tonight, they really scrub session reports and schedules. So that was the maximum reduction that was identified at this time. I think, yes, absolutely. They've accommodated scheduling so that if a person needed to, you said, first and second period, to go to another job, I'm sure that they would be willing to do that.
So we have asked, we've asked the principals to please look at schedules, look at shifting so that... And I know they're having discussions. Some of these involve working between two buildings as well. So the principals are looking at their schedule. We'll be having those discussions. And to answer, to answer Sue's question, the, the, I don't know the, the final answer, but the reality is we, we still need those two sections in those different areas and someone has to teach them. So I think that would be difficult to say that we're reducing someone totally when we need those two sections. But I do hear what you're saying and it's something we can further explore, right?
I was saying of another reduction at...
No, I think the question is if we reduced a person at 0.6 and they're remaining at 0.4 and we further reduce that person so that they can have a 1.0 full-time reduction, yet still hire someone to fill in those additional two sections? And I, I don't...
So the reduction are based on the operational needs.
Well, I was saying to hire somebody in-house to take each class and it would be a savings overpaying benefits of hiring somebody at a 0.4.
And then if they could be a one, if someone was interested in a 1.2 and another person at a 0.2.
Yes, we'd still, we wouldn't have to pay any more benefits. Yes, we'd still, we wouldn't have to pay any more benefits, which would be a savings there. And it would be a savings because that point four teacher is higher in step. And it would also help that those four teachers.
I mean, that is, I mean, we we will do, we will do some research. I don't I don't know the answer. It is very search.
So one last, wait, last, I'm sorry. Does anyone else have any more questions before I ran all around here?
Go ahead. I have that question.
I mean, anyone else? I don't want to. So if if someone's been reduced to like less than less than half time. They they have rights to, if the full time position comes up within that area, they have right to that.
Right.
It let the scenario where a less than a less than half time or we're on a point whatever it may be, the person finds, well, they just can't, they can't, they can't live on that. And they go, they're still looking for a job, which which what else could they do? If they would find, if they found a job that required that they gave up their point, whatever they had and and resigned, does that, did they lose their callback status?
Yeah.
But if we, but if we lay them off, they don't lose their callback status.
That's right.
So we can examine those on a case by case basis and be as supportive as we can?
Well examined and we will examine and say what the answers are. I'm also not sure if that was a case that they were laid off at point six, but then they resigned total. They would still not be eligible for the point six even then that.
If they resign, and if they're laid off, it's a it's a question.
And then even if they reapply, if they resign and then the note became and they reapply, now they're back to step one.
I would just ask that we look, we look at them case by case and be as helpful and supportive as we can.
We want to see which.
I'm going to jump to a public comment if there are no other board comments on this. There was a, and this is actually, is a very good question from Ari and Gendron, which is, why are we making all these cuts if we don't know what state aid will actually be? And Stacy, you can you know, fill me in on on this, but the crux of it is we've been informed enough to believe that it's extremely likely that there will be a reduction in some time this year. And we feel as a district that ten percent is, you know, vastly likely to happen. And if we don't make those cuts now, then we'll have spent the money already. And to do cuts further in the year, like March, for instance, we'd have to make even more dire cuts at that point. Is that?
Correct. So we were, we were advised over the summer that we could see as much as twenty percent reductions in that year. And we did over the summer start to see some of the scheduled summer payments at eighty percent of the otherwise scheduled amount. And we've already seen a delay in the grant funding as well. So we've already seen, we've already realized the cash flow impact at this point. It's not a full twenty percent, obviously, but we've already started to see an impact from a cash flow perspective. So some local districts chose to to open only virtual offerings, right? To realize savings. We had opted to reopen as the safest way that we could and what was best for our students. But from a cash flow perspective, if we give into the months of December and January and spend that money and we see a nearly five million dollar adjustment, we might not be able to.
We won't be able to pay our employees.
Absolutely. So we need to act, we did everything that we could to make adjustments that were not people related, right? So we renegotiated contracts, we implemented the spending freeze as positions became open, we tried not to fill those positions. So so we took action immediately to to do that. And we tried to hold off as long as possible for impacting people. Now, again, we are a city school district where high needs, we're physically stressed. I do not, I'm going to say, pray to God that we don't see twenty percent reduction here. But I would say the ten percent is very realistic. And I would say that fifteen percent we should, I I I hope that we know something December, January for the fifteen percent. I assume after the election would be a risk a scenario for us to get some kind of of news that is solid. So it's very unfortunate, but we we can't sit idle. We're just not in a position to do so.
Which is why a lot of the other districts have also, many other districts have made similar decisions.
Absolutely. We're not alone. Even even like the state, like the town budgets, they're planning on twenty percent, a lot of them as well. So we're certainly not alone. This isn't just a New York State issue either. I mean, New York State was hit hard, but it's 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 bigger than than New York State.
Thank you. Any other comments related to the agenda or presentation? With that, I could use a motion for the board to adopt tonight's consent agenda.
I'll wait for it.
I'll second it.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
Mr. Noel.
Yes. I'm just going to do, if anyone has any questions or comments about any topic at all, I'm going to check on if there are any more additional public comments. I know that Deanna Kelly wanted to provide a heartfelt thank you to Stacy Mackey and Peggy O'Shea and for their unwavering leadership and dedication over the last couple of weeks and wanted to say that their devotion to the district and community is incredible. And as president of the CPA, that she looks forward to collaborating with them in any way that she can. And that we are lucky to have you all at the helm. So thank you, Deanna.
Thank you.
I know that Bill Smith also wanted to congratulate the district on Peggy O'Shea becoming our acting superintendent. And that it's very difficult times and that we're we're very lucky to to have you and that so that we should all stay strong in this this difficult time as we work through it together.
Thank you.
Aside from that, I I did want to also call attention to a donation from St. Peter's Hospital to the district of numerous monitors, which will be greatly appreciated by the district and our our staff. So thank you to St. Peter's Hospital and also the parent that was helped responsible to coordinate that. So thank you. Our next meeting is October twenty first at six o'clock and it'll be live streamed here again. And we'll be keeping abreast on any information related to the budget from the state or any level to continuing to look for possible avenues to come to a better outcome than we're currently looking at. And we'll continue to keep you abreast of any changes as we do that. With that all being said, I I believe that unless there are any other comments from the board or anything comes in here at the last moment, that'll conclude tonight's meeting. With that, I could use a a motion to adjourn at six forty three.
Before we do that, just text Stacy, whoever helped me. Is this anyone who has retirements on our agenda?
Thank you.
I'd like to thank Dr. Springfield, areas of service for the district. Also, we have Kelly Dagnall, who's retiring, but in the plan curve as well. I don't remember missing any of the retirements.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up. A a motion to adjourn at six forty three.
I'd like to vote him.
Please second it.
Mr. Pascal?
Yes.
Mr. Jackson?
Yes.
Mrs. Dion?
Yes.
Mrs. Carey?
Yes.
Mr. Hanley?
Yes.
And Mr. Noel.
Yes. Thank you again, everyone, for listening in and continue to send along any comments or thoughts to D O E comment at close that are, we look forward to hearing from you. Thank you again.
Thank you.